That's exactly what you're doing.
I'll shoot you in the heart.
You sound like you've done it before.
Thank you.
Over the, over the discussion, asphalt, who go clean? They want a free one. To enjoy what you enjoy then.
So. Asphalt, so it's five point two. I've got six thirty two. Okay, call the meeting to order. Start with roll call.
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
Commissioner Razzell is absent this evening. Commissioner Waddell.
Here.
Commissioner Stallings.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation tonight, the invocation tonight will be by Pastor Spahn. And Commissioner Allen will lead us in the flag salute. Pastor.
Before we pray, I just want to say thank you to each one of you all that serve on the board. I've served on a number of boards and there's a lot more work that goes on behind the scenes than what we see here. Thank you for your service to our city. Also, my wife told me before I came tonight that I should pray and thank the Lord that I'm not in your shoes. You have some difficult decisions, but just know that we are lifting you up in prayer, even outside of this meeting. Let's go to the Lord. Heavenly Father, as we come before you, we praise you as the God who is sovereign, who is in control of all that goes on in our world today. Nothing caught you by surprise and you are still trustworthy and faithful in all your ways. And we can put our confidence in you. And I pray for these deliberations tonight as we discuss different topics of concern to our city, that you would allow for clear communication, respectful communication with one another, that we could share ideas openly and freely. And Lord, I pray for each of the board members as they are having to make difficult decisions, that you would help them to sort through sometimes conflicting interests that are competing for their attention, often sharing opposing views, help them to sort through that and have wisdom from you. And that each one of them would look out for the interests of Enid as a whole. And though it feels like sometimes we're all in this together, maybe lately it's felt like we're not as together as we should. But help us as a community to rally behind fighting against this virus that has taken so many lives that we would see it eradicated and fighting against other things that come against our city, that it will be a place where people can live and serve and work and love one another. And we just thank you for this chance to be together this evening, asking that you would give wisdom to each person speaking and each person involved in voting on decisions that are made. These things we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you Pastor, thank you Commissioner Allen. Item number three. Item three point one, consider approval of minutes of the special commission meeting of August eighth, twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, administration. Item four point one, consider approval of a resolution concerning funding pursuant to the CARES Act and Coronavirus Relief Fund, confirming that is the policy of City of Enid that all public safety personnel costs are substantially dedicated to the COVID nineteen response efforts of the city throughout the ongoing state of emergency. Gerald.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this is CARES money that was given from the federal government to the state. The state has apportioned that money to the cities now. The city's apportionment is approximately three point eight million dollars that we can draw upon. We have turned in reimbursement expenses in the general range of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not the exact amount, but that's an approximation. And initially, the guidance from the state was that we could claim anything COVID related, expenses for any kind of supplies or equipment or leave, like the coronavirus, families first leave. And we've done that. They have recently revised their guidance to us in early August and said that we, and I think it was through a recognition that most communities will not be able to timely draw down that money, because we have a deadline too of claims have to be in by October thirty first. So they've allowed that it's assumed now that public safety personnel expenses can be claimed if the governing body does a resolution such as this that says that the public safety payroll expenses are substantially, or that public safety efforts were substantially dedicated and have been to COVID related efforts. So that's why we put this on there. This will help us actually get all of that three point eight million dollars drawn down and pulled into the city coffers. And so, so that's what it's there for. Are there any questions I could answer for you on that resolution?
Just to be clear, Gerald, there's no strings attached to that, right? They're going to be obligated in any way?
No, it's, I mean, we have to report and will eventually there'll be an audit of the expenses. But there's no strings that I'm aware of that we have to do something else or we have to submit documentation of the payroll expenditures in the claim system. They have to approve it. They have said they will. There's been several meetings with, with the governors, folks that are administering this in cities. And then at some point, there'll be an audit, but this is an approved, an approved method that has been offered to us through the state to be able to get this money. Any other questions?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. All right, item four point two. Approve a resolution amending the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one general fund balance budget by appropriating additional funds in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to increase the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one appropriated amounts for the general fund, general government department.
I can go ahead and answer that one for you too. What this is, is appropriating some money that's reimbursable through CARES Act too, that money I just talked about, to specifically help out a couple of organizations in town that we have a relationship with. In fact, we've, we've, we've given them CDBG CARES Act money to help out with rental assistance for people in need and also utility assistance for people in need. All of those initial monies, which were, I believe, two hundred and forty thousand dollars initially that was given to CDSA and Catholics charities, has been expended. And we're in the process of getting it reimbursed and paying it out to those organizations. And they have some other grants that they have, but this money would be very helpful. I understand the need is very great and there may be an even greater need than this. But I knew we wanted to get something on the agenda to help during this difficult time. And so that's what this is, is a start.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda items. We've had two people that wanted to talk to, we've had one person wanted to talk to two different items on consent agenda. So I will ask them to come forward before we do the vote. Alatory, Alatory, I'm sorry, for item five point two of talking about Cummins Construction Company item.
Thank you. You want me to speak on both of them once?
Yeah, go ahead and just do them independently though.
All right, so I noticed that we're going to purchase a hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of asphalt. My question is, how much of, how much of this amount is going to go to Ward Two on the east side of the railroad tracks? I would like, I actually would like all of this money to go there. Hundred percent. Also, where's the five point three guardian?
Five point one three?
Yes. So that's the total amounts. I already, I noticed that there's, that the city employees are going to have like a raise possibly end of the year. I support raises. I think that somebody deserves a raise if, as a whole, if they can save money. Kind of like a company, you know, the company does well, the employees does well. Not just give somebody money just because they've been there for thirty years. I mean, sometimes you have to do something to earn the money. I mean, me myself, I would love to get a raise, but you know, sometimes there's hard times, can't give you the raise. When times are good, get more money. The reason I say this is because if, if the employees could see, if the city, city being employees could figure out ways that themselves could save money just in general. I looked at the list, looked at all the different places, departments at City of Enid, I feel that they could probably save a dollar or two. I'm exaggerating, but.
Okay. Gerald, would you like?
May I say something, Mayor? Before you leave, Mr. Alatory, I would, you're my ward.
Yes, sir.
I want to bring it to your attention that me and the city manager, Mr. Gilbert, we visited on street repairs in southern heights of Ward Two. And we've taken pictures and we're in the process of making repairs to the necessary streets that need to be repaired at this time. And also different places, other areas of my ward where streets need to be repaired. And we also have a list, the engineering department for the City of Enid has a list of streets, interior streets that we're repairing. So eventually, all the streets over time will be repaired. It's not going to happen overnight, but I want you to know as your commissioner, last Thursday, I went and sat down with the city manager. I showed him pictures of streets that need to be repaired. So we're working on it. So also, I'd like to thank you and congratulate you for coming. The last time you came, I asked you, continue to come. So I appreciate you caring and coming to these meetings. And Commissioner Waddell, many times, he's been asked a question. Why don't, why doesn't anything happen? Why don't we see any improvements? And he's told individuals that if you come to the meetings and you continue to come and you be persistent, things will happen. So thank you for your persistence. I appreciate that.
I think that addresses, kind of answers your question on five point two. Mr. Gilbert, could you talk a little about the process used for the raises?
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk about raises, but let me talk about streets first, because I know that's near and dear to all of us, not just in Ward Two, but in every ward. In fact, I know I've had some commissioners talking to me about streets. And so we're probably overdue for having a study session in the near future about streets and about how we select them and about which ones are on the street or which ones are on the list to be repaired or replaced. I don't need to, I won't go into all the details, but streets are very, very expensive. And that's one of the challenges and why we have no shortage of bad streets. So the specific hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's on the agenda is for asphalt, for the asphalt overlay program that we have. And we're trying to get going really well with our street department to work on the asphalt streets in town, regardless of what ward they're in. A hundred and fifty thousand will not come even close, but, but it's a start. So that's what that is there for. For as far as raises, I wasn't clear which agenda item we were referring to on that. I didn't catch that.
Five point one three. So it's approval of claims in the amount of one, one million, eight twenty-two, nine eighty-nine, seventy-two.
Sure, sure. Yeah, let me explain, payroll expenses are not required by law to be on the claims list. So that claims list, that one point eight million or whatever the amount is, has nothing to do with salaries. That's, has to do with expenses, like paying for the air conditioning in this building, the lighting in this building, the electricity for the traffic lights in town. When somebody hits a pole, when somebody graffiti something and we have to go out and fix it. Those kind of things. And so you can drill down and actually there's some very large costs in there. They're capital improvement costs. So I'm glad that's highlighted. Don't have it in front of me, but if you started to go through there, you'd find a lot of expenditures on capital improvements. But I will go ahead and speak briefly about salaries. That is completely in the purview of the city manager. And that is, that is by design with the charter, which I know a lot of people here are very fond of. It's the constitution for the city. And so my methodology, when I look at that, I'm very cognizant of trying to be prudent and trying not to do anything that might be considered extravagant. I also have the additional challenge of, we work with three union groups, the IFF, the firemen, the FOP, the policemen, and our, what we call non-uniformed employees, which are the ones actually doing the, filling the potholes and mowing the grass and all of those things, keeping the water lines working. And we, we, we've actually successfully negotiated two of those recently and those have been on agendas. And I think maybe, I don't recall how much discussion there was, but there was varying amounts based on negotiation. Because again, that's the law on collective bargaining. And we did the same thing with ASME, but I'm really proud of all the city employees and the work they do. Because if anybody thinks you're going to get rich working for the city, we welcome you to come work for the city. We do need a few good people, just like the Marines. And so, but along the lines of what Mr. Alatory is talking about, I'm very proud that to have said that ASME has worked very well with the city in negotiating an agreement that gives them something now, their pay plan, which has already been approved. And if revenues support something else in January. And something that we probably haven't done a good job about telling everybody is, despite this pandemic, people must be spending money in town because our first two months of sales tax have far exceeded what they were last year at this time. And that is somewhat perplexing. I think that's something that the state is seeing, so that's really good news. Yes. And we're going to know in about a week, you know, what, what, what it's looking like for September, which is really for about two months before, which I guess would be July. So I'm very, I'm very hopeful we're on the right track for, for ASME employees to get another raise in January if the money supports it. And, and I think they, I hope that they do, because I know they're very deserving of that. The last group, well, there's a couple of other groups, the management confidential folks, which are people that essentially supervisors for the most part, and other folks that work closely with supervisors. Those folks I deal with directly and, and do things for and certainly have, like I have the other groups. And then the part-time employees. And then of course, as you know, you have at least two employees, myself and Carol, and you have the two judges. So if you'd like to know more, Mr. Alatory, I'd love to visit with you sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, sir? All right. That said, item number five, consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Item number six, recess to convene as the Enid Municipal Authority. Item number seven, all trustees of the Enid Municipal Authority Special Meeting are present except Commissioner Razzell. Item number eight, Enid Municipal Authority Special Meeting is now in session. Number eight point one, approval of claims in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Item number nine, adjourn to convene as the Enid Public Transportation Authority. Item number ten, all trustees of the Enid Public Transportation Authority Special Meeting are in attendance except Commissioner Razzell. Item number eleven, Enid Public Transportation Authority Special Meeting is now in session. Item number eleven point one, consider a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation Transit Programs Division for public trust revolving funds.
Hey, Mary, would you like to, to explain to the commission the transit, oh, there you are.
Yes, yes, I am here. Yeah, this is the, the revolving funds. We have to have an application just like we do for our other funds, which you're familiar with, like the fifty-three eleven and such. And these are just state funds that we receive a certain amount and that it allows us more funding. But we do have some requirements where we have to provide an audit on our miles that our auditors from Oklahoma City that also do our financial auditing go through, make sure everything's good. It also says that we're providing transportation to our community and those people in our community. And we just have to make sure that we, that we say that that's what we are doing, that we have specific documentation of that. And so the auditors look over that and we provide documentation that says that that's what we're doing. So yeah, do you guys have any questions on any specific what we do there?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve, any other comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, item eleven point two, approval of claims in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Waddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stallings.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Item number twelve, adjourn to reconvene as the Enid City Commission. Item number thirteen, public comments. Before we get going, I just want to make sure that everybody knows we've decided to cancel the meeting for Thursday night regarding a mask. We're not going to be voting tonight or Thursday night on a, on a mandatory mask issue. So if that's the issue you wanted to talk about, you're free to express it. But it's, we've already made the decision not to do that. That said. That said. That said, I'll go down the list in order of, in the order that you signed up, and if you'd like to speak, you certainly may do so. Again, please try to keep your remarks brief. We usually say two minutes, there's not that many people here, but I'd still like to respect that timeframe if possible. So first one up is Pastor Bertleson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no issue which I wish to address, except I just want to say personally, I love each and every one of you. I want to say a word of appreciation to Gerald and to Carol, to every single commissioner. Jonathan to you, Rob to you, David to you, Mayor to you. Pastor Norwood, I call you a pastor, the greatest speech and message I've ever heard, I heard you give at a city council meeting. Thank you so much for your love for our city. And of course, Jerry, a friend for a long time. You all are in a difficult position, and I speak on behalf of thousands of citizens of Enid. You don't get paid. You want what's best. You're looking out for us, and I just love and respect you. Every morning, I pray for you. And even though I may be on a different position for some of you in terms of government and what the government can and should do, I will always love and respect you, including Ben Rizel, who's a man of principle, who lives by his principles, disagrees with many of us, but at least he's willing to state it, and if Ben is watching or listening, I say, you are my brother, my fellow patriot, you love this city, and I will continue to pray for you. And I'm praying for our city. And to anyone listening, wear a mask, keep your distance, protect the people around you, respect boundaries, but recognize, this is not so much about masks for us, it's about us having the freedom to determine what is best for our families, our businesses, and our churches. God bless you, God bless Enid, and God bless America.
Thank you, Pastor. Nick Calabretti? I'm sorry.
Thank you all for doing what you do around here. You guys have a lot of tough decisions to make. We do really appreciate what you do. I'm here to talk about what we have here in Enid that's very unique. Right now, with the decisions that we've made, is we're seeing a place where we do have health freedoms, we do have commerce, we do have opportunities, and I do believe, depending on what happens in the next three months, Enid could potentially get more companies coming here. And we're not talking small companies, we're talking possibly tech companies that wanna work. And I'm a business consultant, I work with companies from California, Minneapolis, East Coast, and they're all suffering. And they potentially might wanna come to a place that they can provide for their family and have an easy cost of living. And that could potentially bring up real estate prices, it could increase education, and it could also increase the value of this area. So I kinda go with the Sweden approach to what's going on with COVID. They've been very successful, and I think if Enid plays the cards right, this'll increase. We do have to let people make their decisions, and people in this country have the right to fail or succeed. So just keep it, be aware of where we're at. I do know that, I believe Enid's gonna be at the top of its game by the turn of next year, as long as we keep things where people can make their own decisions. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kevin Copenhagen? I probably butchered another name there, sorry.
Justin Mike. I just want to say thank you to our mayor for taking this meeting off on Thursday, and I want to thank our commissioners that did go with him on this. We just thank you for making that decision and looking out for Enid. I also want to talk about the open forum, we talked about the building, I think that was a great idea, I think Waddell was in favor of it, and I think the commission, that's a good thing that you're doing well, and that that building will be used for good with our kids. I want to talk about the kids having a place, like I was just thinking of the mall as an example, but you guys could make that decision, but our teenagers get in trouble, and children, but I would like to see our city commissioner eventually, city council go to where we could have a building for them to have, just to hang out, and I would even, and I know people don't like hearing this, even putting a half a sales tax on, where we could have children, where they could have a place to go. And I know your creative minds could do that, and I just, that's my concern, is our children. And so, and we thank you for your work, and we know you do have a hard job. And we are over 900 people strong in the Freedom Fighters, and we're not here to fight with you, we're here to work with you and to be as brothers and sisters in Christ, to work together. We do kick people out of our group that misrepresents us, that's a vigilante, that is against you guys and calling you out, calling you names, we kick them out of our group. We are about peaceful, being peaceful in our way of talking to you guys, and if anybody has misrepresented us, please let us know, and we will remove them. We are not, we are to be working together as a team with you guys. I just want you to know that, and I hope and pray, and as Wade was saying, I pray for you guys, I pray for Ben, I pray all, because I know you guys got a hard job. But I hope and pray, this is the last time we see this mask mandate ever be brought up, because it, you wanna know what my philosophy is on why our income, our sales tax are up? Is because people are coming from Tulsa, from Oklahoma City, to Stillwater, they're coming over here because you guys give us freedoms to think for ourselves. Thank you, commissioners, and keep up the good job.
Emily Lattick?
So it's short and sweet, and there's no timer. That's a bummer, but I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. We, there it is! Thank you so much for pulling the meeting, we appreciate you listening and being responsive. Everybody wearing red tonight is telling you thank you. All of Enid Freedom Fighters wants to tell you thank you for listening and being responsive, and we're here because we're watching, and we want to encourage, and we really are sincere in that, so it's a big thank you from us.
Jennifer Fletcher?
I'm gonna be a long list of coming up and saying thank you, just thank you very much, we appreciate it. I love that our sales tax are going up, people are coming here, thank you for taking care of us, and thank you for taking it off on Thursday, I appreciate you, all of you.
Johnny Rochenberg?
I'm Johnny Rochenberg, and I own two businesses that really thrive, you know, really thrive off Enid's people. Own fine rifling remodeling. You know, it's kinda got to me about all the mask crap that's been going on. I mean, I get it, if you wanna wear a mask, wear a mask, let's just don't keep pushing this down everybody's throat. I mean, I almost think it needs to come to a vote tonight or sometime, just be done with it. I can understand that, you know, some people need to wear it, some people don't, you know, and I'm not harping on you guys, because you guys done a heck of a job. Everybody's sitting up here tonight, the reason you guys are here is because everybody in Enid really like you and voted you guys in. That should say something, man. When you get home tonight, look in the mirror and smile, because that means Enid loves you, or they wouldn't have you in the position you're in. I know you guys got difficult jobs to do, and, you know, my whole deal is, let's just don't take away people's freedoms, and I think that's, you know, you guys got rid of the mask deal that's supposed to go on tonight, and I appreciate that. But, you know, like in my situation, we're working early in the morning, I mean, we start at 5:00 in the morning, we work till 10:00, 11:00 at night, there's no way my guys can wear a mask on a riff. You know, it's hard for us to even be running around, running to Lowe's and grab something, because we're not gonna stop and put a mask on just to go into Lowe's. But I just want you to know, we appreciate what you guys are doing, but just think of everybody that's, you know, if people sick, they should wear a mask, if they're not, they should have the right to do what they want to do. Appreciate your guys' time, thank you.
Joe Alafon?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, commissioners, I want to thank each and every one of you for the hard work that you do on behalf of the citizens of Enid. I thank you very much, and even though I don't agree with some of you, that doesn't mean that I can't be courteous, respectful, and grateful to you for your service. Thank you very much. I know public service cannot be easy, I certainly wouldn't want to have to do it myself. I pray blessing over each and every one of you and your families. Good night.
And nobody signed up online. So, that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.